I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission a special meeting for Wednesday, August 17th. Hey, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Carmichael.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here. Commissioner Pill.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Bartel.
Here.
And Chairman Richard.
Here.
We have a call.
If you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody, please, I would ask you two things. Silence any and all electronic devices, and while you're standing, you've got to be sworn in. So anybody who wants to talk this evening, I would request that you stand and be sworn in. I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help be God. Thank you very much. Okay, under old business, planning and zoning item 16019, Peak Custom Homes LLC, regarding the properties located at 224226 West Burlington Avenue, Westmont, for the following: A, site and landscaping plan approval to build two new single family semi-detached dwellings. Please, sir, if you would, give us your name and sign in. Do we have a sign-in sheet out front?
There's sign-in sheets outside, there are two. There's one up here at the front desk, and just in case one circulates, I've got.
I would ask anybody that approaches the podium to speak, please, if you have not signed in out front, sign in at the podium.
My name is Demetrius Panos, and I'm the president of Peak Custom Homes. We were here a couple of weeks ago, and you requested a continuance for us to make some, make the elevation and the site plan that we had a little bit more architecturally appealing. So we've gone back with our architect and our landscape architect, and we've come up with a bunch of modifications to the existing elevation to make it more architecturally appealing. For instance, number one, we changed it to a two-brick facade to give it a little variation between the two individual units. Number two, we added a dormer at the roof. Number three, we set back the front elevation, the sides, a little bit more into the building to give it a little bit more architectural appeal, as you can kind of see from this step in the elevation. Number four, we added peppering to the stones. So as you can kind of see through the brick, there's some peppering of stone to kind of give it a little more architectural appeal. Number five, we added a limestone sill at the bottom of the base window for the unit to the left, as shown. Number six, we added a bay window to the right unit, as you can see in the elevation. Number seven, we revised the front elevation. Before, it kind of had kind of like a shed roof coming down, so we made it more architecturally appealing by adding a little bit, this roof, as shown on the elevation. Number eight, to tie the two bricks together, we did some shake siding above the entrance, as you could kind of see in the elevation. Number nine, we updated the front doors to make them a little bit more architecturally appealing. And number 10, we have keystones in the middle of the soldier brick courses at the windows. So we spent a lot of time with the architect to make it more architecturally appealing, went through, you know, a bunch of different ideas. You know, sometimes doing more isn't always better, so we think that these 10 steps that we took to make it more architecturally appealing would satisfy the initial comments.
All right, sir. I would commend you on your response to our concerns. Staff, may we have your comments, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As discussed, this was a continuance from the August 3 meeting. The first two items, which have already received a positive recommendation with the variances needed to construct this, what was left open and ended was the site and landscaping approval plan. The landscape plan, which he had just submitted just before the last meeting but had not yet been reviewed by our consultant, has been reviewed. It does meet or exceed our landscape requirements for the site. And then, as he has indicated, he has made several revisions, and at the time that your packets went out, the architetchals weren't quite ready. So what staff did provide was kind of some back and forth that we were showing that he was working with us continually for the last two and a half weeks to try to make those revisions. And as he's presented, he has taken many of those things that staff has shown him into consideration. And as always, we are available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this subject? Seeing no hands raised, we'll close the public comment. Could we start with Commissioner Bartel, please?
Well, I commend you for all the work you've done in the last couple of weeks. The drawing does look similar to the others in the area, and it meets or exceeds the requirements. I see no problem at all, I'm supportive.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I would echo some of the previous commissioners' comments. I greatly appreciate what you guys have done, the 10 things definitely are an added boon to the architecture, and I feel comfortable recommending to move forward with this. I would ask that your architects spend one more slight design iteration, just to add some detail, like some muntens to the windows, I think is standard for the precedents and also things along the Burlington Avenue.
What was that comment, or?
Just the windows look a little bare. They just look a little, little bare. But, and also the material palette, I mean, it's definitely an improvement, just, I guess, no more comments.
Commissioner Thomas?
Again, thank you very much. I appreciate the effort that was put in for our concern. We're not professionals in that, but we know what we like. But I appreciate the extra miles that you went, and I fully support your idea.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pill?
I too want to thank you for making a lot of updates in a relatively short period of time and getting us drawings and plans. I feel you've come a good portion of the way, and as such, I would support this. I would bring two things to mind here, and I'm going to say these both for the staff, because you'll be working with them. One, I agree with the other commissioner as far as the windows. I mean, the one window that you did, is that a bay or a bow?
Bay.
I think it's a bay.
The bay window looks great. The others, it makes them look a little plain, and something just to dress them up just a little bit. And then, I understand the concept of the two tones on the bricks, and that may be the way it ends up, but staff may want to take a look at perhaps unifying the colors of the brick and using the stone as the differentiating factor between the two. Other than that, specifically on that one, the windows a little bit, I'm in agreement and can support your project. Thanks for all your hard efforts.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I too support the changes and appreciate the change you made, I was supportive.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes, same here. We leaned on you a little heavy the other night.
That's okay. I think the suggestions were appropriate and were needed.
I support it.
Thank you.
And again, likewise, I thanked you before, but I'll say it again, and I hope you didn't mind the way we put off the site plan, so we worked on your variance so you could.
Sure.
You did close, hopefully successfully?
We will soon, if we get a positive response tonight.
I also, though, if you could work with staff without too much money, I don't want to make you go broke here, okay? I want you to be a success. But if you could do something on that, it'd be the western window.
Okay.
And if you could perhaps even match it to the right or dress it up a little bit more, it looks pretty bare. But I also applaud, and I'm all in favor of it. Okay, all we have is a site and plan. So, under planning and zoning item 16019, Peak Customs Home, regarding the properties located at 224226 West Burlington Avenue, Westmont, for the following: A, site and landscaping plan approval to build two new single-family semi-detached dwellings. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner, I'm sorry, Bartel. Question on the motion. May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have a recommendation for approval, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
I don't suppose anybody would care if I asked for motion to adjourn? No, huh? Okay.
Second.
At least they're laughing. Okay, next item on the agenda, planning item, planning and zoning item 16011, the HARP Group, regarding the property located at 3500 Midwest Row Oakbrook, for the following: A, map amendment request to rezone from B3 Special Business District to a planned development overlay district in the underlying B3 Special Business District, with the following exceptions from the zoning code. One, exception to increase the maximum FAR for an 18-acre land area. Two, exception to the minimum lot area requirement for a multiple-family residential construction for an 18-acre land area. Item three, such other waivers as may be necessary to facilitate the development of the 18-acre parcel. Item B, special use permit request to permit residential dwelling units in the B3 Special Business District. Item C, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum number of signs permitted in the B3 Special Business District for an 18-acre land area. Item D, preliminary concept plan approval for the new construction of an auditorium in a multifamily residential apartment building, including a site and landscaping plan for an 18-acre land area. Item E, preliminary plant of subdivision approval for an 18-acre land area. All right, correct me, John, if, but I believe it would not, we postponed this in an open public comment, so a motion to continue the public comment?
To reopen the public hearing.
To reopen the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing on planning and zoning item 16-019.
Second.
Okay, that's motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Carmichael. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay, sir, representatives of the HARP Group, if you would.
Thank you, Chairman Richard. Again, my name is Peter Dumon. I'm the president of the HARP Group, which is also a Westmont-based business. I'd like to, as I'm signing in, again, thank all of you for your time. I think we're about 10 hours into this public hearing so far, and we've made the decision to be extremely brief. So, after the second public hearing that we had, and, you know, obviously after the first one, we did not get any feedback from the commissioners, given the amount of time that was spent. We did hear from you, we heard your concerns, and did the best that we could to address those concerns, and I'm going to summarize those now. On the June 15 submission, as you see, we had 92 efficiency units, 111 one-bedroom units, 123 two-bedroom units, for a total of 326 units, 1,257 total parking spaces, which excluded the maintenance lot that we'd proposed. We'd proposed the subdivision of 18-acre parcels into five smaller parcels. The building was seven stories, and the FAR was more than staff and the commissioners appeared to support. We listened. The updated unit mix dramatically reduces the efficiencies to 15 units. The one-bedroom units are, you know, go up to 164 units, and the two-bedroom units are reduced to about 71 units. And I think in that mix, you'll see, you know, a clear response both to market conditions and to your comments, but there's also a total of 250 units, which is a 23.3% reduction in unit size. We've heard a lot at both public hearings with respect to parking, and it's our great hope that this evening, the commissioners and staff will take yes for an answer. We've dramatically increased the parking count on-site through increasing the size of the parking deck, which is hidden substantially by the apartment complex, so we've increased the parking count to 1,781 total spaces, so 41.7% increase, even though we have reduced the demand by changing the unit count and the mix of the apartment complex. We eliminated Lot 5, or as we called it, the future development parking lot on the far western side, and is now combined as a single lot with all of the shared parking, so that will remain parking. There's a, you know, the building is now a six-story apartment building, and we've enhanced the architecture with a step-back appearance. As you'll see, we've got some three-story wings that are featured on the edges, and then there's also an overall reduction in the FAR. We have also committed to a green roof and LEED certification. Molly Meyer from Omni Ecosystems is here, if anyone has questions for her later, but we've done green roofs in the past in other buildings that we've developed. What we've never done is actually grown crops on them. Molly's got an amazing business to, you know, which actually reduces the weight of the roof structure itself, and then allows us to grow crops. And I think in our plans, we've got roughly, I think about an acre and a half where we can produce crops, and, you know, we had the benefit a few weeks ago of touring Omni Ecosystems' facility in downtown Chicago, and it was just fascinating. All of the crops that are produced are going to be utilized, you know, normally Molly arranges for one of her, a company that's friendly to Omni Ecosystems, to actually handle kind of the utilization of those crops, so they're sold to either markets or restaurants. In this case, you know, for obvious reasons, we're going to utilize all of the crops we produce on-site in the food and beverage operation that we have, both for the banquets and in our restaurant. So that's something we're incredibly excited about, and, you know, I was there for about 90 minutes at Omni, and my head was just spinning about, you know, the different crop rotations that we could do, and, you know, how this could actually be another thing that, you know, school children, schoolchildren in the area can utilize on field trips in addition to the honeybees that we currently cultivate at the resort. We are, again, designing the building to achieve LEED certification, which will become the first LEED-certified building in the Village of Westmont. I'm going to turn it over now to Rick Fawell and Louis Abuno, if it's necessary, to discuss the enhancement of the architecture.
My name is Rick Fawell. I'm a principal at the architecture firm of Wright-Herma in downtown Chicago. As Peter mentioned, you know, we've made a number of different changes, primarily reducing density, reducing height, decreasing the number of units, increasing the amount of open space, increasing the parking. I think these are all pretty much comments that either we heard from staff, or we heard from you all in the last presentation. As we began to look at other options for what we could do with the site, and specifically when we were looking at open space, began to think about the possibility of a green roof, which I think we had shown, but not really researched in any huge detail. Fortunately, we managed to sit down and talk with Molly, and we've had a number of groups come down and visit, see their operation, and talk about the idea of the green roof, the costs, the maintenance, how it would be utilized as local produce in the restaurant and conference center operation, as Peter mentioned. It also stemmed a little bit from our discussions with our lead consultant on what we were going to do to be able to achieve, if we could, achieve LEED certification, which, after we went through the checklist in detail, we will actually be able to achieve LEED certification, either gold or silver, possibly even platinum, depending on the ability for us to tap in and use renewable resource, energy resources, like photovoltaic array on the roof, possibly even geothermal for the mechanical systems. Depending on how efficient we get with our energy modeling, we may even be able to hit platinum, which would be a huge achievement, especially in a building type like this. We've also looked into a couple of other options for making the building much more efficient that will help with the LEED certification. So all of that begins, you know, to be a lot more exciting, comes with additional time to research and think about this. We also heard loud and clear, and it wasn't, it was in our plans, it wasn't necessarily as crystal clear as it should have been, or as coordinated, between our landscaping, our lighting, you know, we're going to make sure that we aren't light-polluting in the area, sharp cutoff light fixtures for the parking lot and things like that. The auditorium itself will take measures to make sure we don't add to any light pollution, and we're particularly mindful of that. We spent a little bit more time on the landscaping and the open space. I think in conversations with staff, there was a desire to, as you approach the resort, not sort of come so quickly up onto a building, but actually onto a bit of a green space that has a fountain and a monument sign that announces the entire resort to the public, and makes it pretty clear that, you know, because of the additional roundabout that we've created, it's clear as to which way patrons for the resort, whether it's an auditorium, the apartments, or the hotel and golf and conference center, go, and which way residents who go to the townhomes proceed. Just to make it also clear, in your packets, I think you all received, we went to a little bit extra effort on being able, to try to show you exactly what kind of interiors you can expect in this rental apartment, luxury rental apartment complex, so that you'll see three renderings, three renderings of the two-bedroom unit. We picked one unit to show you the type of quality of finishes and things, and then also the amenities, because the amenities inside the resort are, inside the apartments are probably just as critical as the apartments themselves, it's the place where, you know, the community spirit is developed. So we did renderings of the great room that demonstrate what kind of space that's going to feel like, with sort of a bar area, coffee bar and lounge area, sort of a living room, TV around a fireplace, and then games and things like that. All of that then gives out onto the courtyard where the swimming pool is, with cabanas, fire pit, and barbecue. So the infrastructure is there for something that's much more of a high-quality luxury experience, with all the different amenities that you would expect to find in this type of product, based on the market that we're aiming at in this particular situation. Things like the theater, business center, meeting rooms are all part of, pretty much standard these days in this type of product around the area, and I think last time we talked about the different comparable rental, luxury rental apartments in the area. Parking now with almost 1,300 spaces in the garage really becomes quite an amenity, because all of it ends up being protected in interior parking, which is, for the Chicago winters, a real boon, not just for the people in the apartments, but also for guests to the resort, to the auditorium, to the conference center. We're going to provide, as we mentioned before, you know, rideshare and shuttle service, but also the ability to rent and have zip cars, electric charging stations inside the garage, as well as bicycle parking and bicycle maintenance shops. I'm sure I missed something, but we'll talk about it later.
And we're keeping it short. Good evening. As many of you know, I'm Mary Ann Kaufman, and I'm, my family is hoping to build the auditorium in Westmont as part of the world-class project. I, like many of you, have been following the Olympics in Rio. Our United States swim team exceeded expectations with record-breaking performances and the total medal count. I think we all feel a tremendous sense of pride in their personal stories and accomplishments. Each of these talented athletes made it with the support of their family, their coaches, organizations, and, of course, our communities. The benefits to children and adults when they have a nearby pool cannot be overstated. Providing a solid foundation in programming from youth and adult swim lessons, exercise programs, and several aquatic teams for all ages benefits everyone. You would be surprised how many adults can't swim and are limited in their activities. Opportunity is the key at early ages. Firsthand, I experienced it at my high school, Andrew High School in Tenley Park, when a new facility positively impacted my high school and the community. It broadened the programming within the community from fortunate country club members to include all residents. In previous meetings, I addressed those athletes within and outside of Westmont, having a facility that would support their dreams and goals. As we all watch the Olympics, we're watching polished athletes that have been refined for over years. Somebody like Michael Phelps, along with several Illinois Olympians and Olympic trial qualifiers, started and developed from grassroots programs. As they developed, exposure to great competitions and venues becomes essential. The auditorium takes all of the above into account, and we've taken that into account with our thoughts and with the design of the auditorium. I want to thank you all for your support and recommendations that have made this world-class project in Westmont more refined, and a project that will help serve our community and our neighbors.
So many of the features that Rick talked about will benefit, you know, not only the apartment users, but also resort guests, and in our discussions of do we want to be LEED certified or not, and how far up that food chain do we want to go, you know, they, to their credit, were looking at it and saying, geez, everything's going to get more expensive. I said, yeah, but it's going to get more appealing to the customers, too. It's my understanding there will be a Tesla delivery station here in Westmont. We want to welcome those people to the resort and have the ability to valet park their car when they're there for dinner and can charge it up for them. You know, more indoor spots means more valet parking, I can charge for that. The car wash stations, you stay overnight, can I wash your car, sir? All of those things are going to make the overall resort complex better, and so it's going to help the resort, help the apartments, and help the auditorium. Again, all of these uses are intertwined together. So in conclusion, I would just like to point out that we've done our best to address the commission's concerns on parking, landscaping, density, revision to the architecture, the unit count and mix, the height of the building, the subdivision issues. We have pointed out that, you know, hopefully more clearly than last time, that there are definitely sidewalks down to Cass Avenue, and there's also a walking path, you know, included in the proposed development. Additionally, we've added the green roof with the ability to have the crop infrastructure and use the crops and create a really cool feature for the Village of Westmont. We've committed to be the only LEED-certified development in the Village of Westmont. As we pointed out at, you know, the two previous public hearings, this project will substantially increase tax revenues for the Village of Westmont and all of the, you know, the variety of taxing bodies that exist, including the schools. So we believe, in conclusion, that this project is great for the community, great for the schools, and great for Westmont. And I'd like to take this last moment to thank the many organizations and community members listed here who have selflessly given us their support. It's something that we don't take lightly, and it's something we truly appreciate. Lastly, I'd like to again thank all of you for your time and your patience. I know this is a volunteer position, and we have a tremendous amount of respect for the time and dedication that you've given to our project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, may we have staff's comments, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As this is the third time we've met, I'll try to be brief and just highlight some of the changes since the last time we've met. As part of the plan development overlay and establishment of the plan development district, there are exceptions, and then there are also variances outside of that plan development. The exception to increase the FAR is still there. The exception for the minimum lot area is still there. And then, what has changed is there's variances. There was a variance for parking that was requested last time. I'll discuss some parking numbers, but that is no longer requested or required by code. The special use permit for the residential is still a part of the project, zoning code variance for the number of signs, and then the preliminary concept plan approval and preliminary plot of subdivision. The bulk of the building, the last time it was before us, was seven stories tall. The applicant has changed the design to, the bulk of the building is now six stories tall. The internal parking garage is seven stories tall when you're not considering what's below grade, but they're actually proposing one grade, one parking level below. And that increase in size is... And that increase in size has made a much bulkier building in terms of its footprint, but they have actually reduced the number of units that are there. There are several three-story kind of wings that tend to break up some of the bulk of the building. The plan development request in this submission, the applicant has outlined some things that they propose would be a part of the actual agreement. That includes restrictions on the future development of the golf course, parking management plan for large events, swim meet informational requirements, kind of coordinating some of the parking for the large swim meet events. Staff does still recommend that they do an annual special use approval for the meets, so that annually we can kind of reassess if a meet seemed to be deficient in its planning and that there could be better planning. They also proposed that there would be ballroom restrictions during those large events, so they are not leasing out both the ballrooms and having a large event at the nadatorium. And then they've included some timelines for 20 to 24 months of completion for some of the proposed improvements that have been brought about through the meetings, including the golf cart storage and replacement of the tent structure with an actual solid structure, remove all the tennis and basketball courts, and putting a putting arena, and installation of some guardhouse and entry improvements as negotiated with the adjacent residential. Staff does note that the proposal does not tie any improvements to the construction of the nadatorium, they've only proposed that they be tied to the construction of the apartment building. Staff would further recommend that there is some language in there, they discussed the green roof. As they said, it's new to them, it's also new to staff. Staff has, you know, gone to the site downtown to kind of see what the proposal was. Being that it's kind of a new venture, and it's not a part of an approved landscape plan, staff would ask that there be some sort of language requiring the perpetual vegetation maintenance, and that the residences have the ability to utilize the space. Because what staff would not want is that if the project moved forward and it started with the green roof, that someone decided it was too expensive, and they let everything die, or, you know, take it all away, and then that amenity no longer existed there for the residents. So, staff has to, something be included with that. Staff also asked that there be some measures if only one facility is constructed, such as if the nadatorium site, if the apartments were built and suddenly the nadatorium dropped out of the project, that the nadatorium site be improved with improved landscaping, so that it became an amenity. That if the apartment building was not built, and considering it has the parking garage, that the parking requirements to serve the nadatorium were still met. And then the proposed 24-month improvements tied to the certificate of occupancy may need additional triggers if the apartments are not constructed. So, are there any of those amenities that if the nadatorium's constructed and the apartments aren't, those amenities that are promised, should there be some measures to make sure that they still get installed if they are deemed as needed? Moving on to the waiver requests, the Forerare ratio, as they've indicated that the major change is to the apartment count, they've gone from 326 to 250. Looking at the overall site of 18 acres, it brings their initial request of a .95 FAR to a .86. There's the minimum lot area for multifamily residential waiver request. They have reduced the number of units. Based on the unit mix, it only results in about an acre less of the waiver request. So, overall, it would generate that they need about 32 acres of open space, so they would be 15 acres deficient based on these 18 acres. The special use request for the residential is still there. As they've discussed about the unit mix, that was a staff concern and I think commission concern, especially with the number of studios. They have changed their mix to just 6% of studios, so they've reassessed those as one bedrooms. Also, I would point out that when you reassess as one bedroom, that means it's 1.5 parking spaces per unit versus 1.0 for a studio unit. So, it actually increases the demand, which kind of had shifted gears when it went to a lot more studio units. The variance requests, maximum number of signs, we had been working with the applicant. It was found that the piece of information, the findings of fact were either omitted or missing in the last meeting. They did provide those to us in advance. They have revised the signage on the building, mostly because they added some awnings over the retail above the sidewalk to add some detail, and then they added some blade signs. So, whereas one business would have had one sign, now it has two signs. So, the overall sign request increases to 18 signs overall for the site. As discussed, the off-street parking variance is no longer needed. I would like to go over briefly the parking requirements. Staff did include an updated spreadsheet for you. As in the last meetings, the staff is looking at the hotel, the golf course, the conference center as an existing use that had 965 spaces. The nadatorium, based on village code, is a requirement of 280. That's based on 1,400 occupants at one per five seats. It's 1,200 seats is what has actually been proposed as the nadatorium, but in discussions with the fire department and such, we feel that there's going to be 200 extra bodies on top of that would be running around, so to be conservative, we added the 200 in there, and that's how we derived the 280. For the multifamily, based on the unit mix, it would require 403. And then on the retail, which is a part of that building, it's reduced to 23 primarily because they've reduced the commercial space from a proposed about 11,000 square feet down to about 9,000 square feet. So, it has reduced that requirement. So, based on village code, the total number of required spaces would be 1,671. The spaces provided are 1,781, so by these counts, they actually have a surplus now of 110 spaces. I think, Mr. Chair, you expressed that the one per five was a concern, and I think the initial, more conservative way that the village was looking at it was 1.3. This doesn't fully accommodate the number that I think you quoted in the last one, but it does increase it by 110, that there's 110 extra. The preliminary concept plan, staff did include some initial comments in the narrative that we gave to you about our concerns, such as some things that they've already touched on, such as sidewalks to Cass Avenue. They have provided those now and shown them in plans. They have added a landscape feature at the entree, at the traffic circle, that includes a water feature. The parking lot to the west is no longer being subdivided as a parcel for future development. That was a recommendation from both staff and I think the commission, that all of the shared parking be on one lot. And then the issues with the seven-story kind of imposing building, although staff does feel it could be improved a little bit further, I think the materials haven't changed, they would still be requesting a masonry waiver if they went forward with village board, because it's not a masonry building. But they have made some attempts with the three-story wings, bringing it down to six stories. Preliminary plot of subdivision has changed slightly because it's proposed at four lots instead of five. Taking out that west parking lot, it basically increases the acreage of the apartment building, mostly because the footprint is larger. Then staff is available for comments, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody from the audience who will wish to speak either for or against this issue? Please step up and have your say.
Good evening, my name is Tom Pichter, and I'm a resident of the Development Next Door, 22 Willacresse Drive, and I provided Jill a copy of my document, I don't know if that's in your package or not, this evening, I provided it yesterday. So, let me sign in real quickly and explain to you why I'm standing here. You know, it's very impressive, Mr. Demond, all your consultants, it's a really impressive development that's proposed, all the changes, it's very complicated, but what those things do discuss are aesthetics and code needs and ordinances and variances. But I stand here to talk about economic risk. You know, as a businessman, I take risks many times over, buying a business, selling a business, building a business, and starting a business, and there's no one who's going to guarantee us our success. What I'm concerned about with this development is that I view it as a moderate to high-risk venture for a number of reasons. I think the bottom line, though, is if the venture is successful, the village will be quite the benefit of enhanced property taxes, hotel motel taxes, property taxes. It goes to the benefit of the entire village, and that would be wonderful for the village. If the plan is successful, unfortunately, it's our opinion, I have heard from some board members of our community association, based on a preliminary evaluation, that we as homeowners would still lose value in our properties, 43 units that currently exist next door. And so, while Mr. Demond's development is a very large project, I'm going to guess $40 million plus just on the apartment, and the generosity of the Kaufman family for the nadatorium, probably $25 million plus, very substantial investment, very substantial. And I do not want to indicate that's not, but rather, on our side, there would seem to be, conceptually, a transfer of wealth, as our properties would diminish in value, their properties would continue to hold value. Now, granted, it's pretty more complex than that, but if the plan is successful, that would be great again for the village. But what if the plan is not successful? There's going to be a very long construction period, and I've heard a lot of discussion about parking spaces. How many parking spaces are lost, for how long before new parking spaces are made available during the construction period, and what does that do in the interim to the hotel guest count? I've traveled most of my life, and I'm a little bit different age than my children, they have a little different outlook, they'll take Uber, and they'll do B&amp;B and all that stuff. I don't engage in B&amp;B, just go to hotel and stay at hotel. But the convenience of a hotel is really great, where you can pull up and you can walk there, and it's nice. When a project does fail, there's what we call unintended economic consequences. And my concern, as I've outlined, is, well, what if it does fail? What happens? What happens to the hotel? What happens to the golf course? Probably the nadatorium will continue on because it's funded by the family. But what happens to the hotel? And then, since the hotel motel tax finances the convention bureau, according to the budget that I've most recently looked at for the last couple of years were the budgets for the village, the hotel motel tax was running somewhere in the vicinity of $700,000. And I can only guess, I don't have the details, but I'm going to speculate that the Hilton property generates more than 50% of the hotel motel tax, which in turn funds many amenities for the village residents, including the Fourth of July fireworks, flowers and baskets, holiday lights. And I'm thinking, no, that can't be the case. We couldn't have a domino effect where if the project fails, that turns the hotel and puts it into jeopardy, that in turn goes downstream to the residents who rely upon those amenities. I'm sure the village would be able to find the money for Fourth of July fireworks some other way, but I'm just saying, when I look at the economics of unintended consequences, I get concerned about this large project. I'll try and summarize, if I could. I've got six pages in here, but there is risk associated with this. At the time that Mr. Demond bought the property with his partners, they financed 99.5% of the purchase price of 30.1 million. That's a matter of public record. What's also a matter of public record is, Mr. Demond was interviewed a few times by Cranes in Chicago back in 2013, and he talked about life, learning lessons, about being over-leveraged, and, boy, we're going to go slow as we go. In the future, we're not going to do over-leverage, we're going to be more conservative as we go into new projects, and I can appreciate all that. But when I look at the current facts of this development, I see high leverage, I see high risk, and a luxury apartment complex built on the parking lot of a hotel just doesn't seem to match to me to be a low-risk proposition. You know, I'm not a hotel developer, I'm not an apartment developer, but I am a businessman. I've been in business for 30 years, and I've done a number of deals, both as a consultant, as a buyer, and as a seller. So, I would submit to this board, you have a really difficult job ahead of you. I appreciate all the hard work you put in, all the hours, I hear now it's 10 hours into this hearing process. It's very difficult, but I would surely request that you consider what if the project fails? What are the downstream consequences? Thank you for your time.
Take just a moment to get the computer fired up.
Thank you. My name again is Scott Day, I'm here with Christina Morrison, my partner. We are from the firm of Day, Robert &amp; Morrison out of Naperville. In conjunction with attorney Kevin Gallagher, we have the privilege of representing the residents of Oak Brook Hills Condominium Association. Like Peter indicated, we too intend to be brief. You have suffered through 10 hours of our previous machinations on this particular project. We understand that many of you probably have already made up your mind on the basis of what you've already heard in the past, and some of the issues that will be raised again. Please have patience with me. This is a case that is legal in nature. We don't deny that you have a much improved apartment building before you. We don't deny that you have a much improved parking configuration before you. We don't deny that Marion Kaufman will do a wonderful job with the nadatorium, regardless of where she does it. The issue that we are here before you for is, in America, we have the privilege of disagreeing with respect to our governmental institutions, and legally, it is our position that the village lacks authority to approve this project. We don't believe that the village has lawful authority to approve this project. So, we have a record that we have to make this evening, I hope that you will be patient with us as we set that forth. We gave you a written submittal, I know that you just got it this evening, it was many pages in length, I trust many of you have never read it. There's an August 16 letter to chairperson Ed Richard, Planning and Zoning Commission, that was presented last night by email. Ken Rathge submitted a lengthy written report that he will address briefly today, that's dated August 15, 2016. Joe Regis from Robert E. Hamilton Consulting Engineers will also give a brief recitation regarding his updated traffic analysis, his report is dated August 12, 2016. There was a subpoena request that was submitted to the village seeking a copy of the ground lease for the golf course. We ask that a subpoena issued, we ask that the village request a copy of the ground lease, to our understanding, and has not yet been tendered. Lastly, there was an easement request, meaning that we submitted to the village attorney, as well as the developer on this project, back on June 24, 2016. In that documentation, we acknowledged, or we stated, that we had repeatedly tried to contact both attorneys to discuss the legal issues associated with this project. We gave them a lengthy recitation regarding why it is illegal for any permanent improvements to be constructed on the parking lot of this particular site. We requested a meeting back in June 24 of this year. We're still waiting. The meeting that we requested to discuss the legal dispute was never granted. Now, I ask that those documents be made a permanent part of the record, we want that formally before the village board, and we want to make sure that each of those documents is part of the permanent record this evening. Next, I will introduce Kevin Gallagher, he will briefly walk through some of the summary items from Joe Regis's traffic report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Kevin Gallagher, I'm an attorney in Naperville, I reside at 128 South Virch...
I reside at one twenty-eight South Virchwood. And with me, I have Joe Regis from Robert E. Hamilton Partners. I'm going to ask him just a couple of questions, basically to update his findings based on the latest submission. And I do think we, I want to make sure that before we start, we thank Mary Ann Kaufman for being very forthright in providing additional information to us to help our evaluation. Mr. Regis, could you explain to us what your findings are based on the most recent submission by the developer?
They have added five hundred additional spaces, as been discussed earlier, which addresses two of the scenarios I was looking at before, which was the existing use plus the apartments. And the existing use, the apartments and the auditorium.
Sure.
And the auditorium for a relatively low use, which is good news. There was more detailed information provided by Mary Ann Kaufman based on an actual swim meet held in March twenty sixteen, which actually shows a number of people arriving into an auditorium, leaving an auditorium. And village code, if you go the one to five, is the two hundred and forty, and I appreciate that it's a bit higher. But if you look at the number of people arriving based on that detailed information for this specific use, people leaving, it doesn't address coaches, employees of the auditorium necessarily, or the meet officials, but it's a significantly higher number than the two hundred and forty using a twelve-hundred-seat auditorium, or the fourteen-hundred divided by five, the two hundred eighty. And I think there's a bit of a disconnect between, if the information's out there, if we know how many people are arriving into short time periods, we know how many people are leaving, that affects both the parking and the traffic study. And I think even additional information, number of coaches, needs to be added in, and an accurate parking space required number is generated from that data. It could be that they're not that far apart, it could be that there is. But the minute that that information indicates sufficient parking is not required, from my calculations, it's over a hundred cars short, then we get into the whole issue again of where is that parking provided? If it's not on-site, where is it? So with more and more information, more and more detailed information on the auditorium is presented, I think it gives everyone a chance to analyze and finally nail home this parking so that it's not a question.
So I believe that the staff has stated that under normal conditions, the parking would be satisfactory. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And your conclusion is that that's accurate?
That is accurate.
However, you've been given information on what are non-standard events, and that would be larger meets, more regional in nature, and would the parking in those circumstances be adequate?
No.
And how deficient would they be?
In excess of a hundred spaces.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to look at the traffic study prepared by Kale Away?
Yes.
And do you have any conclusions that you've reached based on the traffic study?
Right. The traffic study was originally submitted in March. It's been updated several times, I believe, and there's two things that stand out. One is the existing traffic counts, which were conducted on a Thursday in February, in mid-February, is not representative or representative of an average day, which is typical for a traffic count. The golf course wasn't open, and the exact hotel occupancy rate is not listed necessarily, but generally in February, hotel occupancy rates are fairly low.
And so what conclusions have you drawn with respect to the traffic impact?
Redo the count so that the existing count is more realistic, more accurate. I would expect it would go up. It would go up significantly.
And if it went up significantly, what would that lead you to conclude would be necessary with respect to traffic improvements around the site?
I would think with the existing traffic increasing with the proposed added on top, even the slight deviations from what would be considered acceptable for Cass Avenue and Willow Crest would be exacerbated. It could be that if there's a queue that's, a left-turn queue now, westbound left is slightly, the actual line of cars is longer than the physical storage provided in the left-turn lane. If you add more traffic, that queue's going to get longer. People might have to wait more than one cycle of the light. And particularly during a special event at the auditorium, with the new auditorium information available, I think it might be beneficial for everyone involved, Village of Westmont, in turn, instead of just talking about parking management, it would be traffic control management, where if there is a significant event at the auditorium, are we looking at such a failure of the traffic signal where it's multiple cycles for people heading westbound to turn left or any other movement, that that information's out there and can be anticipated for a significant swim meet? In other words, is somebody from the hotel leaving the auditorium, leaving the residences, going to have to wait several cycles of the light minutes in order to turn left? And that, I think, is the importance of updating the traffic study for a good existing count and to wrap all of the data that's available now into the traffic study so the village has in front of it, everybody has in front of it, a report that reflects all the information that's available, which I do not believe that the current report necessarily does.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you very much.
Next, you have a detailed report from Ken Rathgey. He is very briefly going to summarize the bullet points of that report.
Thank you, Scott. Please excuse me, I'll sign in. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Rathgey. You have listened to me probably far more than you care to, and I'll try to make it brief this evening. I've tendered a fourteen-page zoning analysis which goes through the nuts and bolts of the guidelines and laws that you have under which to consider a petition such as this. I intend to try to outline what I did in just a few moments, but I hope you've had a chance to read the whole report. With respect to your comprehensive plan, which is a relatively new comprehensive plan that was prepared by one of the gold seal groups, the Housel Levine, your comprehensive plan has the subject property designated with a land use of park open space. This will become apparently important in just a moment. Comprehensive plan says that you should have no new multifamily in Westmont with the exception of mixed-use projects in the downtown. Further, it indicate, the plan indicates that your residents have indicated a very important objective of rebalancing the ratio between single-family residential and multifamily back to where the community is more of a single-family residential community. Both of these standards are not met and are in fact challenged by the proposal to add two hundred and fifty additional multifamily rental units in a part of town where the land use plan does not anticipate them on land which is designated with a park open space land use designation. Your comprehensive plan goes on to indicate that you should use that comprehensive plan as a tool and to use it whenever you're making a land use decision. Issues like what land you should go where, and the goals and objectives that you have established just three years ago, seems as if they're being missed here. Page one forty-two, I saw a very interesting comment that the village adopted concerning spot zoning. The comprehensive plan identified spot zoning as the practice of allowing a single lot or small area to have a more intense zoning than surrounding properties, given the fact that thirty-some acres short of the land area needed to support the multifamily and at a density that's many times the maximum when you combine the floor area ratio and the land area per dwelling units. I think that the concern that there might be a problem with spot zoning is galvanized as clearly an issue, concern of spot zoning under this measure. When you go to the B-three zoning district, specifically under section seven point oh-six A, intent and purpose, the last sentence reads, "For the purposes of this section, the B-three special development district shall not be considered a planned development." Why is that? When you take a look at the language of the B-three district, it was structured to be a standalone zoning district for a special place in the village. It has its own provisions for preliminary approval, for final approval, for amendments. It doesn't need to be a planned development. In fact, in order for there to be a planned development, you're supposed to have forty acres. This site only has eighteen point two. I can only surmise why a planned development is being sought because both the property owner and the village clearly has procedural standards that are well-developed within the language of the B-three zoning district. The only reason I can surmise why a planned development is being sought is because a planned development allows waivers which do not have the same standards from the certain regulations of the B-three zoning district that would be the case if you had to go in and defend a variation. In April, the municipal code was amended by the village board to add residential dwelling units as one of the special use category in the B-three zoning district. The last sentence of seven oh-six E reads, "Residential dwelling units are not permitted in any existing recreational open space areas." Remember, the first thing I told you was that this land area is designated on your comprehensive plan with the land use of park and open space. I searched your zoning ordinance and looked to see if there's a zoning district of park and open space. There's not. I searched your definition language to see if there was a specific definition under your ordinance for open space, and there's not. But your comprehensive plan does have the land use category of park open space. Why the village board would have bothered to amend the ordinance to allow multifamily as a special use and then put language forbidding it on this property is an absolute mystery other than we had a reluctant suitor, perhaps. Joe indicated earlier that there are certain variations in waivers being proposed. You may remember my first appearance before your board. I pointed out that there was language in the planned development section under nine point oh-two, which says, "The planned development district regulation shall supplement the regulations of the existing underlying zoning district and may, as set forth in this section article, modify or nullify specific regulations of the underlying district." Of the underlying district is specific to the language of B-three. Floor area ratio is language specific to B-three. Building units per acre is not language specific to B-three. It's contained in the R-four zoning district. Just as the staff has affirmed the need for variations for signs and for parking, although that's been removed, as variations, both of those items are referenced under B-three as something you have to abide by, but they have to be dealt with only as variations. In the case at hand, your public hearing notice showed that signage requires a variation, but it treated the land area per dwelling unit as a waiver, as this really is a variation because if you treat signs and parking as needing variations for relief, you must also treat land area per dwelling unit as a variation because there's only a reference to that section. It is not language that's contained within the B-three zoning district. Failure to publish for a variation for the land area per dwelling really means that there has been a failure to give proper notice, and therefore, a public hearing on a variation cannot be considered or recommended by this board. The petitioner has provided the document, it was on the back of this drawing, it was called Legal Narrative and Master Plan. I hope you've had a chance to read it because it's very interesting. The petitioner has indicated that they need a waiver from the floor area ratio, but they've gone and defended it according to the variation standards, which they don't have to have. They only have to have a waiver. They've also neglected to provide any defense for the variation for signage. In conclusion, I'd like to indicate that the proposed development is in significant conflict with the objectives of the village's comprehensive plan. Additionally, with respect to floor ratio and land area per dwelling unit regulations, the scope of the proposed development far outstrips the intentions of the zoning ordinance to foster reasonable land use density and intensity standards. As examples, the hotel floor area ratio currently uses about seventy-eight percent of the potential density which the zoning ordinance permits. If you add just the auditorium, that would use ninety-three percent. The two non-residential uses pretty much use up the zero point five floor ratio maximum that your ordinance permits. The residences by themselves, as Mr. Hunter friend indicated, use about thirty-one point five eight acres of land that is unobstructed by other uses. Floor area ratio and land area per dwelling is like currency. If you have a floor area ratio zero point five, for every one acre of land, every forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, you get a little bit less than twenty-two thousand square feet of non-residential land area. For the residential elements, you use about thirty-eight hundred square feet of land area for each studio or one bedroom, and I think fifty-eight hundred square feet for each two-bedroom. If you were to deal with this as a budget, where you use, you need X amount of land area for the non-residential, X amount of land area for the residential. All told, in order for this to be a conforming use under your ordinance, the site needs to be about forty-eight and a half acres, which is a little bit less than, almost a little bit less than three times greater than the land area that you have. Finally, the claim that the petitioner needs the apartments at a density many times greater than the maximum density permitted by the zoning ordinance does not make any logical sense as the juxtaposition of a large rental apartment building onto a suburban hotel resort property. It's a complete mismatch of land uses, and at worst, will result in conflicting land uses, which uses which may damage each other's viability. One curiosity that I'll end with, I believe we have heard that the petitioner intends to carve out three-point-seven acre site upon which the hotel is sited and sell it as an independent property. Now, I understand that the way the ordinance works, you can spread your density over the entire site, but if you sell this off, the proposed two-hundred-and-fifty units will have a density for that site about eight-point-five times what is permitted under the R4 zoning district. In the event that your ordinance ever gets changed, take a real hard look at your legal non-conforming language because if the language changes in your ordinance, making the whole thing legal non-conforming, in the event of a catastrophe, this site may not be rebuilt under your legal non-conforming language.
What we have before the plan commission this evening is an entirely new plan. This is a down from three-hundred-and-thirty unit apartment building down to two-hundred-and-fifty units, which is clearly a significant reduction in density. So if high density is bad, lower density is better, but that still leaves high density as being a negative. High density in this village is bad, lower density is better. So clearly, the reduction from three-hundred-and-thirty apartment units to two-fifty makes the plan better. A reduction in density is better for the village and the surrounding land use. Next, seven-story massive parking deck containing hundreds of additional parking spots is now said by your staff to be code compliant. If your parking configuration is code compliant, that must be good. So in this regard, the plan that you are reviewing tonight is better than what you had before. I think the previous plan was referred to by one of the plan commissioners as one of the worst that they've had come before the plan commission in the history of the village and their work. So no doubt, the better plan, this is a better plan than the three-thirty unit plan. It's a better plan than the plan that required over nine-hundred parking space variation. But that's not the question that's before the plan commission. Your ordinance doesn't give you permission to approve a plan because it's better than a terrible plan that was previously rejected. That's not what your calling is. The question that remains before the plan commission is whether this is a good plan for the village. The question that is submitted to the plan commission is whether the, not whether the amended plan is better, it's whether the amended plan is good. It's not whether an auditorium is a good use somewhere in Westmont. It's whether an apartment and an auditorium is appropriate in the parking lot of an already approved final plat under the B3 district that's been in place since nineteen eighty-four. That's the question. Is an auditorium and an apartment building an appropriate use at this location in a community that doesn't want any more rental property? That's the question. That's before the plan commission. It's a better auditorium and apartment plan, but the question is, is it a good one and is this an appropriate location for these uses? I submit that the questions before the village that we are raising is, can the village approve this amended plan without abusing its zoning regulations? We don't think that you can. Can the village approve the amended plan without violating its legal scope of discretion under the law of the state? We don't believe that you can. My client submits that there's a firm no to those questions, and let me briefly explain why. First, Slide eight. We previously raised this. This is a permanent access easement that's recorded over the property. Two months ago, we provided an extensive piece with case law and legal reasons why under the law of this state you cannot reduce an access easement by placing permanent obstructions. We've gotten no response from the village. We have no idea what the village's position is. The village board hasn't responded. The plan commission hasn't responded. The petitioner hasn't responded. We need for this record a position that the village is going to take. Otherwise, the record that the village is taking in this case is no response. That will be the response to this legal question. Next, B3 zoning. Remember, that plan you just saw was a final plan under your code. It was a final B3 plan under your code. It was approved and adopted by ordinance, and it was constructed and developed. Your code provides, in the B3 district, "No approved plan shall be terminated after development commences except with the approval of the village board and all of the parties with an interest in the land." An easement is by definition under Illinois law, an interest in land. You have no less than forty-eight property owners who have an interest in the land that is the petition before this board that had not consented to this plan. You cannot process a change to a B3 final plan without the approval and the consent of the parties who actually own an interest in that land, and that includes all of the easement owners. We've gotten no response to this issue. We raised it previously. It is not clear why the village is turning a blind eye to the easement law. It is not clear why we are getting no response from the village to either the easement law or the zoning ordinance. All we can say for the record is we're getting no response from the village. You simply march forward and process development approvals without the petitioners before this body. Density. The acreage chart. This is the chart that was in the previous plan. You can see that they have calculated the number of bedrooms and they have calculated the gross acreage that are necessary just for the apartment building. That's just for the apartment building under your code. Previously, it was thirty-three-point-six acres were necessary under your code for the apartment building alone. They have three-point-seven acres for the apartment building. Now, the staff chart provides that this thirty-three-point acres is for the entire eighteen-point-one acre parcel of property. The entire eighteen-point-one acre parcel of property isn't vacant. Your ordinance says if you're going to build an apartment building, you've got to have thirty-three acres to accommodate that number of units. What your staff report says is they've got eighteen-point-one. They don't have eighteen-point-one. There's a six-acre hotel on that site. There's a nearly two-acre auditorium that is proposed for part of this project, and then you've got the apartment building, and then you've got an enormous shared parking complex that isn't even part of the FAR. This is not an eighteen-acre site. It is a three-point-seven acre site by their own application. So what is required for this density is thirty-two acres now, and they are providing three-point-seven. So if high density is bad and low density is good, this is a very, very high-density proposal on a three-point-seven acre site because it's nearly ten times the quantity or ten times short of what it should be for the land mass. That's how dense this proposal is. Next slide. We have FAR calculations. Keep in mind that your FAR calculations report the size of the hotel at eighty-three-thousand seven-hundred square feet. But the proposal that's before you would actually approve the construction of an entirely new conference center and an entirely new indoor cart storage facility. I don't know that you're aware of that, but this proposal contemplates that there'd be an entirely new building that isn't on that FAR chart. You don't know what the square footage is going to be for the cart storage facility, the size of the building. We have no idea what the FAR of this new building that they're asking you to propose or approve as part of this plan because it hasn't been added into the chart. What's reported on the FAR is different. You now have three-point-seven acres for the land mass. You now have a point-eight-six FAR that is reported down from the point-nine-five. That's roughly four times what's permitted in the district. And the FAR, next slide. It excludes the parking deck. The FAR is four times what's permitted in the B3 district, and that excludes a seven-story, twelve-hundred square, or twelve-hundred parking space parking deck. That's not even counted in the FAR. By the time you combine the FAR that's four times what your code permits and the parking facility, now you have a true idea of the mass that is being placed, in some cases, fifteen feet away from the single-family and duplex homes that you previously approved in the residences. That's what's going on. You have a development that my clients had approved by this village at two-point-seven units per acre, which is a single-family density, and now you're putting in a unit on one-tenth of the land mass that it needs at four times the FAR. Your engineer said this is not a site where you can get the parking wrong. You have a disagreement. I think your staff has indicated that the parking is code compliant, no variation is necessary. But keep in mind, all of the parking for this site is now in a garage that's in the apartment complex. The auditorium doesn't have any parking. It's in the other side on a different lot. Your code requires that if your parking isn't on your lot, it has to be under a lot that's under the same ownership, has to be under unified ownership. There is no variation before you for the unified ownership. They're asking you to approve the parking for the auditorium in a building that will be an apartment complex that will be sold off to a different entity on a subdivided lot, and it won't be under the same ownership. They're telling you that, but there's no variance that's been requested. Next, traffic report. The traffic report was given such short shrift that back in March, your own traffic engineer said that February is not a good month for traffic counts particularly in the vicinity of a golf course. That's never been updated. We've got a couple of updates on the report, but they just blew this comment off. You're still dealing with a traffic report that's out of date, that is done at a point in time that is not appropriate for parcel of this nature. And part two, the traffic report that you now have in your file, I don't know if you've read it, it's not for two-hundred-and-fifty units. It's for a two-hundred-and-ninety-seven unit apartment. It's not even for the project. This is before the plan commission. So they didn't even bother to update or provide you with a traffic report for the revised plan. Value of the condominiums. This is not a complicated question. You've seen the appraisal reports. You've heard the testimony. You've heard the concerns that were raised by the residents in the condominiums. I simply ask you to truthfully ask yourself the following question. Ask yourself the following question. Would you pay more for a luxury duplex adjacent to a seven-story parking deck, two-hundred-and-fifty apartments, and a sixty-thousand-square-foot auditorium? Or would you pay more for a luxury duplex that's adjacent to ten-plus acres of surface parking that has recorded ingress easement rights over it where you can walk, exercise, and traverse to and from the hotel and the recreational amenities? Which one's more valuable to you in your mind? Would you rather live fifteen feet away from a density that is four times what's permitted under the FAR and on one-tenth of the land mass it's supposed to be on, which would you rather live on? If your answer is you would rather live on the one that has the less-dense neighbor, then you're recognizing that these people that I represent will be selling their homes for significantly less if this plan's approved. Now, I know that they are viewed as holding up the progress of Westmont because they oppose this plan, and I know that I am speaking law to you and ordinances and rules and regulations. It's one of the beautiful things of the country is that they get to have me speak on their behalf and stand up for their rights. But it's even better that communities are not permitted to abuse those rights. Communities are not permitted to look the other direction on a comprehensive plan that says, "We don't want any more apartments." Communities are not permitted to completely ignore the rules and regulations of their own zoning ordinance, and that's what they think is happening here. That's what they believe is happening. I think that they're correct. I think that the approval of this particular plan would violate their rights, diminish their property values, and violate the code. Ground lease. Has the village received the ground lease yet? Have any of the plan commissioners seen the ground lease? I have not. I've asked for it repeatedly. I sought it by way of subpoena. You clearly have authority to get the ground lease. Now, what has been proposed, and your staff is recommending, is that you have a land use restriction over the entire golf course. My clients wholeheartedly applaud preservation of the golf course. This village should be preserving the golf course in perpetuity. You should insist on a perpetual land use restriction that will forever keep the golf course as open space. Why, as part of a development proposal that's currently before you, would you be satisfied with a promise that I will restrict it for twenty-eight years, but after that, you're on your own? And why would you accept that pledge if you don't even know if he's got the legal right to make it? Until you see the ground lease, you don't know if he can restrict the golf course. If he can restrict the golf course, why aren't you getting a perpetual restriction forever? Protect it for the betterment of the village. And if he can't protect the golf course, then why would you suggest that somehow or other promising that he won't use it for the next twenty-eight years is a valid pledge of any kind whatsoever? And the issue of the golf course should be of concern to you because golf courses are drying up and simply being bulldozed throughout DuPage County. We've got one in Country Lakes in Naperville that simply went away. We've got one now in Bloomingdale that's being bulldozed. As soon as the golf course goes away, it's no longer a recreational amenity, and the zoning ordinance that your village board passed says that you can put R2 zoning and apartments and land uses similar to what is proposed in a B3 district if it's not used for a golf course. That's what your code says. So why doesn't the village have this ground lease? Why don't we have the ground lease, and why are we lacking the transparency associated with knowing what is going on in this golf course? Because these three parcels of property, the condominium site, the hotel site, and the golf course site, they are joined at the hip. They've been that way since nineteen eighty-four, and for the village to not insist that the ground lease be part of this particular transaction, you are missing an opportunity. You have the leverage at this point in time to do it, and you need to take that opportunity and that leverage. In closing, I want to applaud Peter and his team for improving the plan. Architecturally, it's a much better plan. From a parking standpoint, they have attempted to work with your staff to come into compliance with what the code provides. We don't think that they've done so. You have an incredibly complicated code, especially with respect to planned development proceedings, because you don't even have any standards, and there seems to be contradictions between your B3 district and your zoning. But Peter has hired a very competent architect. He's done a very, very good job of the architectural modifications to this building. The step-back design, I think, is a significant improvement over what was previously before you, and unfortunately, the mass of the parking garage is dictated by the need for parking on the site if this is approved by the community. Not the issue. He's done a good job with the plan. He's done an earnest job with the plan. The concern that my clients have, they have an over forty-million-dollar investment in this one-hundred-and-forty-acre development that this village created. They came in dependent upon the village to make good decisions that would not crush their property values. This is a proposal to get an auditorium that everybody's excited about from an auditorium operator that everybody pretty much likes and respects, and the price that you have to swallow is to put an apartment building in a community that doesn't want any more rental properties at densities that are four times what are supposed to be in this district and on land that's one-tenth the size that it needs. That will crush their property values. They are dependent on the village for you to protect their interest. They may be the little guy in this particular transaction, but that's why they're here. Now, we know that most of you have made decisions. We appreciate the fact that you've listened to Peter and Dan and his team and our team as well. We know these are hard decisions, and we respect the fact that you are drawn in multiple directions with respect to these decisions. My clients are part of the community. They love the fact that they can come and tell you that approving this would be wrong. We know that some of you may vote to approve this and send it to the village board, but we thank you for the opportunity to state our case. We thank you for the opportunity to make this particular record, and my clients are proud to be part of Westmont. They want to be part of Westmont, and they want to simply protect their own investments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dumont, do you care to rebut any of those?
Sure, thank you. I would only state a couple of things. On the legal matters, there's a clear difference of opinion. You know, as Mr. Day mentioned, we've got very competent legal counsel. I've also gotten backup opinions. I've also gotten backup opinions, reviewed all of our easement documents, you know, not just select ones, but all of them. And we are extremely comfortable in our legal position. The other comment I would make is in respect to the risk that one of our fine neighbors made. Public record is what it is, and unfortunately doesn't accurately reflect our capital structure. Currently, we have about $15 million of equity and roughly, I believe it's a $26 million mortgage using round numbers. With the apartment building, we're using a 50% loan-to-cost loan and 50% equity. We are currently in, I would say, final discussions with one of the largest corporations in the world that does over $80 billion a year annually in revenue for them to be our partner in the apartment project along with our existing private equity partner in the hotel. The Kaufmans are doing the auditorium entirely without a loan. So from a risk perspective, I'd say this is about as low as it can go. And, you know, I think sometimes in life, the greatest risk we take is when we do nothing. As I pointed out in our first two presentations, this hotel peaked financially in tax generation for the village, revenues for the golf course, revenues for rooms, revenues for the conference center. Goes back to 99, 2000, and it's been dying since. And we came in here a little over two years ago. We've put $10 million into the hotel so far. We plan on putting another $10 million inside the hotel, not including the FAR that I initially made as a gesture to improve the lives of our neighbors by getting the golf carts underground, eliminating the noise that happens at the tent. If Mr. Day's clients want that, we'll do it. If they don't want it because it's too much FAR, we'll take it away. I think it's a vast improvement to the hotel. Getting rid of those carts, putting in a putting green on some of the neighbors' backyards. And I don't believe we have any structure that's 15 feet away. I think it's a, I know there was a 50-foot buffer, and I think we're actually more like 75 feet away in terms of the auditorium, which will be the closest structure. So just want to make sure that the facts are clear. You know, with respect to the public record, you know, when you buy a hotel, you're buying the building, which is real estate, you're buying the furniture, which is not. So what gets recorded is sometimes less than the overall investment. I just want to make that point clear for the record. Other than that, I have no further comments. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Will there be any further public comment? Were you sworn in, sir?
I signed in front.
No, I need to swear you.
I did when you asked for concurrence.
Yeah, okay.
My name is James Peta. I live at 101 Livery Circle in Oak Brook. I am the HOA president of Midwest Chase, which is on essentially 35th Street and Myers Road. We heard a lot tonight about traffic studies. One of the primary concerns of my residents are what's going to happen to traffic flow down 35th Street. Any of you who have traveled 35th Street and CAS know the problems already there. You add 600 to 800 automobiles into that intersection any time of the given day or night without proper traffic study from the DuPage County Highway Commission, we're all in trouble. Now, the DuPage County Highway Commission won't look at this until you all make a decision. The reality is, we're not born yesterday. We need you all to ask DuPage County for their help in designing traffic flows in and out of this complex. And without that, I think we're all going to be in trouble because enough, not enough has been done to move in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Will there be any further public comment? Seeing no hands raised, we will close the public comment. Start with the commissioners. Commissioner Carmichael.
Well, this is the toughest issue I've had to face since I've been on this board. And I certainly, I think we all have been swayed both directions repeatedly, whipsawed perhaps. And there are an awful lot of positives to this project, and there are a lot of negatives. And I've worked very hard weighing them, and I did not have my mind made up when I came here tonight, Mr. Day. And I want that property to succeed, whether in this configuration or whatever. And the legal questions notwithstanding, I, and certainly the desirability of having this auditorium, we would all love that. But that said, at this point, I cannot support this project. I think it's overly dense. I think its impact on the neighbors is very negative. It conflicts with the village comprehensive plan. And finally, when you stand back and look at it from a distance, I think that putting an apartment building on the parking lot of a luxury resort is just wrong.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Well, I'll reiterate what I said previously. I've been on this planning commission since the early '70s, and that was the end of the boom, when all the apartment buildings were going up in Westmont. And well, beginning of the '80s, we realized the error of our ways. We realized the instability, the transancy that you have in a community with the ratio of renters as opposed to homeowners. And so without any written anything, we have not had one apartment go in here since the '80s. If anybody can contest that, I welcome you. I've been on this board all the time. This, we are currently have a ratio higher than anyone in the Chicago suburbs of apartments to homeowner dwellings. And the silence of our city fathers on this is screaming at me when we come out with a comprehensive plan iterating what we have felt all along. This has to be corrected. And then to want us to approve this, I just can't do it. So I cannot support this plan.
Commissioner Pill?
Thank you. I also have given this a lot of thought and a tough decision. I do like the changes that have been made. I think they're in the spirit of cooperation in what we're looking for. And I think that there's no question that this is an infringement on the homeowners in that area, but the overall result is one of benefit for the rest of the residents of our town from many different standpoints. And at this point, I'm in support of this plan.
Commissioner Thomas?
I'd like to thank the HARP group for hearing our concerns and coming up with alternative plans. And I was wondering if it would be possible for, you know, you have architectural drawings and that, and what maybe an architect can put into a drawing on what the residents will see from their point of view of your development? You know, it, you could, I don't know. I'm not an architect. I don't know if that's the possibility of that.
I believe we showed a drive-by of that at the last public hearing. Certainly, the reduction in height helps that. But there's a, on the eastern boundary of our side, the western boundary of their site, there's a setback boundary where we intend to do a large landscaping mound and then plant, you know, a variety of evergreen trees that ultimately will become quite tall. So, you know, Rick's, I believe, got some of that if we can get it loaded.
This is an animation that we did put together. Let me full-screen it. Bear with me, there's a bunch of things in here, but this is sort of as you drive in the resort, this is the first image you see, the monument sign, the fountains. And then as you peel off to the right, all the resort traffic will do, drive past the sort of courtyard, which now with these three stories on either side is a lot less in scale. As you come around to the resort, there's, first aisle, you peel off for the apartments, the next one you peel off to the auditorium, and finally, the third one to the entrance for the hotel, conference center, and then ultimately to golf. And again, bear with me because this, it's at the end of this animation, but this. See, I can speed it up here. I better not touch it, I'll probably just screw it up. But in answer to your question, we did numerous times sort of go into the Townhome Street and drive through that and on the way out. So please bear with me, it'll get there eventually. This is the view from the auditorium, day and night. Here we go. So if you would sort of land in the Townhome Street and be driving out, looking back, you can see, there's not too much you see from the center of, but as you leave the complex, this is what you start to see. Now, again, landscape's not 100%, you know, designed. And I'm sorry that was so brief, but I think you get the impression, right? Yeah, so in answer to your question.
Well, I'd also like to thank you for that. The decrease in the apartments and the effort that's being done. Long story short, I'm in support of the, this plan.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, yes. I also have been going back and forth in this. I think I made up my mind four times today, one way or another. And I've put in a lot of thought, but there's, it's such a complex balance of pros and cons with this. And I've only been on the board for a year, so certainly the hardest I've ever had to make a judgment on. I do have questions, I guess first to staff about if we could clarify, if not just for me, maybe other people on the board, exception, variance, waiver, what are the important differences that we need to be aware of tonight?
So when a project is processed as a plan development, it's supposed to allow for, and we list in the plan development chapter of the zoning ordinance, the purposes behind the plan development, creativity and flexibility in design, et cetera, et cetera. There are a number of factors that are part of the findings of fact that were passed out tonight. And the idea is that by allowing, for example, cluster development and preserving open space, just as an example, you can have exceptions or waivers from strict application of the zoning ordinance to allow for a larger comprehensive development as a plan development. Otherwise, if there's a deviation from a zoning ordinance that's not part of a plan development, we process those as a variance. For variances, we have very specific findings of fact that are in the zoning ordinance and that have to be made by you with any approval or recommendation for a variance. With an exception to a zoning ordinance as part of a plan development, the village does not have specific findings of fact that accompany those waivers or exceptions. Nevertheless, you'll see in your findings of fact that the, that were passed out from the plan development, they are, the exceptions are actually identical, we listed findings that are identical to a variance.
Thank you.
It may be more form over function in some regards, but there's different publication requirements for a variance than...
I mean, I guess my concern to my question was if it's an exception, is that kind of a carte blanche, free pass for future developments? Now, this is a PD, so I'm assuming if we, for some reason, come back and want to add three more stories to this apartment complex, is that, would that still require approval through the zoning ordinance? Or would that just be an exception that was passed for this plan and doesn't need further...
No, the exceptions that you are considering are very specific to this specific development. So any changes to the plan that would add density, et cetera, would have to come back, go through a brand-new public hearing, new site plan, and amended exceptions or perhaps new exceptions to the zoning ordinance.
John, if I can just jump in here? I think one of the concerns that the commissioner brought up was whether the exceptions, if granted, would be set precedent for future developments. And I think, as I understood, the answer is no.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I think in general, just speaking at a 10,000-foot level, my main concern is the open space and the FAR exception. I think the points been made quite clear that it's a very dense design and master plan. I do question, though, I mean, we were handed out a pamphlet tonight up here on a development in Downers Grove that seems to be in a very more urban setting, and it's not a campus like this. And so its open space would be even more limited. So I guess my question, and I guess this would be to staff again, if a big multi-unit apartment complex got built where we wanted it, say, at some time in the future downtown, it would have a similar FAR problem, an open space problem, would it not?
That is correct. We would look at the number of units. We have a multiplication of square foot per unit based on the number of bedrooms. So the downtown would be a different scenario unless the site accommodated all the open space, which, and the downtown may not.
Okay.
And then downtown would be considered a transit area and a development, which would be considered differently.
Right, well, that's where my mind, as I'm trying to work through these issues, it's that we have limited space here, and we don't have the amenity of a transit-oriented development would bring to the site. So that's a concern. And I like the green roof that's added, even though I think it's somewhat untruthful because I don't see any mechanical or utility spaces on the roof, which you see, you show it on the auditorium, but I don't see anything on the actual, unless it's going on top of the parking garage. But I don't see anything there. So like, when we're talking about crops, when we have an open space problem, I would say ditch the crops and have a dog run or have some more open space for the residents and prioritize that valuable commodity on the site. The architecture renderings that we received look very pretty and sparkling. I appreciate that you guys did that, those revisions that the staff originally recommended to decrease kind of the overbearing facade. I still think that it's somewhat unwelcoming. It doesn't look residential, and it looks quite, I mean, to me, that looks really subpar for what developments could be in this area for multifamily use. But I think, and I won't talk forever, but since this is a special use, it's part of the request tonight, it has to not be injurious to its neighbors for the use that was previously approved, and that's an open space use. To me, there's no doubt that home values would be affected, and so I don't see how, even though I want this to move forward, I just, I feel like just from a planning and zoning perspective, not an economic perspective from the village, we'll let the board, you know, have recommendations from the EDC on that. But from purely planning and zoning, I feel like it doesn't meet the requirements of a special use to put residential on this lot. That's the extent of my comments.
Commissioner Bartel?
Well, first of all, thank you for all the concessions you made after the board had made some suggestions and the staff did. When I first heard of this, I thought, oh, you know, we really don't need more apartments. However, and the legal issues have to be worked out amongst the lawyers. I think there's benefit to the whole community. I think that the offer of the auditorium is very generous and a wonderful addition of the project. But because, and there is benefits to everyone, and all projects come with calculated risk. And so I'm supportive. I think that this is something that can help the community as a whole. I understand the residents' concern, too. I was one of those people on Black Hawk Drive when standard market was coming in. So there are concerns, but I do believe the benefits outweigh the risks in this case, so I'm supportive.
My turn. I have not been swayed one way or the other. I've been up in, for about a month, I've been wrestling with this. At one time, I'm... At one time, I'm looking at the average occupancy over the winter of the hotel, which is fairly dismal, 36 percent. I can see a, a failing business, and this could possibly help it. But there again, I, I objected very strenuously to allow residential in a business district anyway in the first place. Why do we even have a difference between a residential zoning and a business district zoning if we're going to combine them? This is ridiculous. It's, it's self-defeating. And so, to be quite frank with you, it, I am not in supportive. I, I told you very early on in this plan when we surmised with the individual, if you were to put this rental unit downtown, move the nadatorium over roughly in the footprint that the hotel would have occupied, I could support it, but not this way. There is just no way. Any further comments? All right, we have the exemptions which require a reading of the findings of fact. May we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
This is PZ 16-011, the HARP Group Incorporated, regarding 3500 Midwest Road, Oak Brook, Illinois. Request to rezone the property to a planned development overlay district in the underlying B3 Special Business District with several exceptions from the zoning code to allow for the development of a 60,000-square-foot nadatorium, a residential apartment building, and related improvements. Criteria number one, the proposed planned development achieves the following purposes Article IX of the Westmont zoning ordinance. A, encourages more creative design and development of land. B, promotes variety in the physical development pattern in the village. C, concentrates open space in more usable areas or preserves natural resources of the site. D, provides means for greater creativity and flexibility in environmental design than is provided under strict application of the requirements of other zoning districts, while at the same time preserving the health, safety, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare of the village of Westmont and its residents. E, allows flexibility and development of land as necessary to meet the changes in technology and demand, what will be in the best interest of and consistent with the general intent of the comprehensive guide plan of the village. F, provides for the efficient allocation and maintenance by private initiative of usable open space to all residential and commercial areas and to allow the most efficient use of public facilities and land in keeping with the best interests of the village. Findings of fact, by clustering the proposed apartment building and nadatorium with the existing hotel, the applicant is able to preserve the open space provided by the existing 18-hole golf course and is able to provide revenue to allow for its future golf course and hotel improvements. This flexibility in design is consistent with the goals for planned development. The proposed project will provide enhanced landscaping, including the development of a berm with, with dense landscaping to screen the residential development to the east. The proposed project will include a three-quarter mile walking jogging path and a new putting green. The proposed development will include a swimming pool to serve the residential apartment. These various open space recreational and landscape improvements will help achieve the stated purposes for planned developments. The variety and intensity of uses supports, support the goals of the B3 Special Business District. The B3 Special Business District allows for a variety of uses and intensity of development in an area of increasing urbanization and of growing demand for these kinds of land uses. The nadatorium provides a needed and unique recreational development which will serve the community and the greater Midwest region. The proposed apartment building will meet market demand and will add occupants who will utilize and help sustain the adjacent golf course and other village restaurants and businesses. The proposed development will not increase the amount of existing impervious surface, will preserve existing open space, will provide adequate means of ingress and egress, will provide new recreational facilities, and will not adversely affect the public or surrounding property owners. Criteria number two, exceptions to the zoning code that are necessary to allow the property to yield a reasonable return, which could not occur if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Findings of fact, any new development on the existing 18-acre site would be severely limited by the strict, strict application of the requirements of the B3 Special Business District, thus necessitating these requests for exceptions. The exceptions to the zoning ordinance are necessary to preserve the existing 18-hole golf course as open space while allowing for reasonable development consistent with the intensity of uses contemplated by the B3 Special Business District. Without these exceptions, the applicant could not yield a reasonable return and make necessary upgrades to the adjacent hotel, golf course, and other amenities that serve the public and users of this property. Criteria number three, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances and warrants the requested exemptions from the zoning ordinance. Findings of fact, the applicant desires to enhance, improve, and grow the Hilton property through intense improvements which are consistent with the purpose of the B3 Special, Special Development District. However, the applicant is hampered by unique circumstances in that, one, developable space on the property is limited, and, two, it wishes to preserve the existing open space provided by the golf course and instead cluster development within the existing 18-acre Hilton Hotel property. The exceptions to the zoning ordinance are necessary to allow for this cluster development, which will provide revenue to the applicant to make needed improvements and upgrades to the adjacent hotel, golf course, and other amenities while preserving the existing open space. Criteria number four, the proposed project, with the exceptions from the zoning code, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Findings of fact, the proposed development is consistent with the intensity of development and variety of uses allowed in the B3 Special Business District. The proposed development is consistent with the existing high dense, high intensity hotel and golf course use on the property. The proposed residential development falls below the allowable 125-foot building height limitation for the zoning district. The residential development to the east will be screened by a landscaped berm. The result of the foregoing, as a result of the foregoing, the proposed development will not alter the essential character of the locality.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. Commissioners Bartel, Thomas, Pill are in agreement?
Well, no.
Yes?
No, I'm not.
Right, all of the commissioners are not in agreement. Therefore, the findings of fact for map amendments are not adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Planning and Zoning Item 16-011. The HARP Group, regarding the property located at 3500 Midwest Road, for the following. A, a map amendment request to rezone from B3 Special Business District to a planned development overlay district in the underlying B3 Special Business District with the following exceptions from the zoning code. One, exception to increase the maximum FAR for an 18-acre land area. Two, exception to the minimum lot area required for a multiple-family residential construction for an 18-acre land area. Three, such other waivers as may be necessary to facilitate the development of the 18-acre parcel.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Van Beuren votes no, and Chairman Richard?
No.
Okay, may I have a reading of findings of fact for item B of special use permit?
The HARP Group, regarding 3500 Midwest Road in Westmont, request for a special use to allow residential dwelling units in the B3 Special Business District. Criteria number one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Findings of fact, multifamily dwellings are common throughout the village and in general do not endanger the public health, safety, morals, or welfare. The proposed apartment building will be of high quality and will include higher-end amenities such as an outdoor swimming pool, fitness center, accompanying retail uses to serve the residents, and a walking and jogging trail. Sufficient enclosed parking is provided to serve the occupants. As such, this proposed use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. Criteria two, the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Findings of fact, the proposed apartment building will contain sufficient enclosed parking for the occupants. The residential development to the east will be screened by a berm with dense landscaping and may be secured by an enhanced security gate. Traffic from the apartment building will be sufficiently spread out throughout the day so as not to adversely impact the residents to the east. Pedestrian, vehicular traffic, traffic from this development is not expected to encroach into the residential development to the east. This high-end apartment building should enhance the value of the property and should not adversely affect property values of surrounding properties. Criteria three, the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Findings of fact, surrounding properties are fully developed, and this development will not impede any future development of the surrounding area.
If you, if you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. Two more. I'm sorry, Jill, I didn't see that.
Three more. Criteria four, adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Findings of fact, the property is already serviced by adequate utilities. The development will utilize an existing access road to and from Cass Avenue. The development will not create any new impervious surfaces and will be engineered to meet the DuPage County stormwater ordinance and village stormwater requirements. The project will provide adequate off-street parking facilities for its residents. Criteria five, adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Findings of fact, the property has sufficient means of ingress, egress onto Cass Avenue through a shared access drive. Traffic should be staggered throughout the day to minimize traffic congestion entering and exiting the development. The existing build-out and configuration of the property with a golf course prevents the developer from creating additional means of ingress and egress for the property. Criteria six, the special use shall in all of the respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except if such regulations may in each instance be modified by the Village Board pursuant to the recommendation of the Plan Commission. Findings of fact, the development is consistent with the intensity of uses and development contemplated for the B3 Special Business District. The development does seek several exceptions to the zoning ordinance, however, such exceptions are necessary to preserve existing open space and are necessary to allow other improvements to this property as a whole.
Now, if you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. In agreement are Commissioners Bartel, Thomas, and Pill. All of the commissioners are against. The findings of fact are not adopted for a special use. Under Planning and Zoning Item 16-011, item B, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a special use permit request to oper, to permit residential dwelling units in the B3 Special Business District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Bartel. Question on the motion. May we have a rule call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Van Beuren votes no. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Okay, may we have a reading of the findings of fact for a variance?
PZ 16-011, the HARP Group Incorporated, regarding 3500 Midwest Road, Oak Brook, Illinois, request for a variance to increase the number of signs for an 18-acre land area with the B3 Special Bus, within the B3 Special Business District. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Findings of fact, the applicant proposes a variety of new uses which are consistent with the intense development permitted in the B3 Special Business District. These new uses include a residential apartment complex with several ancillary, first-floor retail business uses, and an auditorium. These new uses are proposed for the property, which is already improved with a large hotel and resort, including an 18-hole golf course. The applicant is constrained in providing signage for these various uses in that uses will occur on an 18-acre parcel, which is considered a single parcel for zoning purposes. The applicant cannot adequately provide this variety of uses and amenities on the single parcel while strictly adhering to the signage requirements of the zoning ordinance. The applicant cannot sufficiently inform the public of these various uses and yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Findings of fact, the village is consider, considering the, the existing 18-acre site as a single parcel for zoning purposes and is processing the applicant's development requests as a planned development. As such, the applicant is constrained by the strict requirements of the zoning ordinance and trying to provide signage for a variety of uses on a single parcel. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of locality. Findings of fact, the property is zone B3 Special Business District, which envisions a variety of intense commercial and residential uses. Given the proposed variety and intensity of the uses for the property, the proposed signage is limited in number and size. The proposed signage is tasteful and consistent with the signage for the existing hotel and resort. The proposed signs will not be visible to the residents to the east and will not alter the essential character of the area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. In agreement, there are Commissioners Bartel, Thomas, and Pill. The other commissioners are not. The findings of fact for a zoning code variance are not adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item C, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum number of signs permitted in the B3 Special Business District for an 18-acre land area.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Van Beuren votes no. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
No.
Item D, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, preliminary concept plan approval for the new construction of an auditorium in a multifamily residential apartment building, including a site and landscaping plan for an 18-acre land area.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Carmichael?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Van Beuren votes no. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
No.
I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item E, preliminary plot of subdivision approval for an 18, 18-acre land area.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Van Beuren votes no. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
No.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation not to approve, but it is only a recommendation, and staff can tell you when you'll go before the Village Board. Good luck to you. Any further comments, Commissioner? Staff? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Commissioner Sharp, seconded by Commissioner Pill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.